So we're now recording, everyone's accounted for and present. Anytime you'd like, Mr. Chair, you can go ahead and start the meeting.
All right, well, welcome to the physical city planning commission meeting for Y nine, the only meeting this month. Our next meeting will take place on the evening of fourth of July, fourth of August. It's a big holiday, it'll be, once again, no parade, no fireworks. We have three of the commissioners here, as I guess we're required to do now, is that right, Lyle? With the, the nomination from the chairman being rescinded at this point.
That's correct.
Yeah, at the meeting, we are here, three of us are here, myself, Steve Lyon, and we are the three commissioners here. And I assume you have four other commissioners. Hi, uh. Who are Jared Ochs, Scott Gess, John Lyon, and Josh.
Son law.
That, that was a hasty text message with my thumbs that turned awry.
I like it, Josh. All right, so with that, we will begin our meeting. Our first item is the approval of the minutes from our June twenty fifth meeting. Does anyone have a chance to review those minutes? Does anyone have any additions, corrections, comments? Is there anyone willing to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Steve Lyon made it, who's this, online? Was it Scott?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, thank you for the minutes. Any other discussion about this? Vote as a group on this one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone ahs? Hey, are you sure? All right, the side market business, official use permit for major home businesses. Private and group swimming lessons at twenty fifty two West Peach Blossom. For Peach Blossom Swimming, looking at this Cameron Garner. And Lyle, I assume, how's Dan doing?
Uh, Dan is on with us.
Oh, okay, is he gonna handle this, or?
Heather is going to do this one for us, so I'm gonna turn the wheel over. You might be hearing more from her on her home businesses, but kind of shifting that where she does our business licensing so directly. But just a warning, you're in better hands, I guess, sorry, Dan.
Before I have to start, Sam, you're on, how are you doing?
Make sure I've got them unmuted.
Welcome back. Do you get a report from the next, I was gonna, man, go ahead.
Okay. So Cameron Garner, him and his wife run Peach Blossom Swimming Lessons. They hold the lessons Monday through Friday, starting about eight thirty a.m., going through about twelve p.m. And they ask that the number of students be limited to about ten per class. Something that they've been doing for a while, we can let them know that they need to get a conditional use permit and a business application. We did have a lot of email correspondence come in, I hope you guys saw that, and so staff is open to your recommendations, changes with class size, or timing, or, you know, overlapping classes, whatever that might be for you guys, and so I'll turn the time back to you.
Hey. Um, welcome, yeah, yeah.
We don't have any applicant or public on this tonight, we're hoping they would be here in person to help us through it. So the commission, I would say, if you don't feel confident with the recommendation you have, we could postpone approving something to get additional information from them as an alternate option, if you think that's necessary.
Yeah, I think I've heard some of the comments. I'd like to hear from the applicant. So, um, any of the commissioners online, what are your feelings?
Um, I don't know if I can help, but just talking on the phone with him, it sounded like they've got, like, one class will end, then immediately the next class will start, so that might be some of their traffic issues, or it's back to back. And then they do have about two teachers with about ten students per class, and it's about a twenty to thirty minute class. So if you're looking at ten students, and they're doing it every day.
So you're talking about ten students per teacher? So they got like twenty, twenty students?
No, no, ten students total. But if you've got, let's see, from eight thirty to twelve, every thirty minutes, you've got ten new students.
Yeah, so the overlap, maybe a little bit of issue. And commissioners, as you know, we've all, we've got several mail, emailed in comments on this, private traffic situation. I drove by to go look at it, I mean, it doesn't look all that different from really just about any other street. But I can see the situation if you've got, you know, ten students being dropped off and ten students being picked up. Be a lot of traffic for a period of time, that might be a little bit of an issue. So, um, I don't, I personally would like to hear from the applicant, and have some conversation with the applicant. But I'm certainly open to whatever you commissioners are wanting.
And I might interject, Mr. Chair, just if that's the direction, which I think is very appropriate. If there are specific questions you would like them to be prepared with next time, that could be part of your direction as well. I don't know if it's too complex on this one, but we'd be happy to go back and let them know, here's what the commission's wondering. Will you please come back the next meeting and make sure we get you those answers?
I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking. I would like to know from them, if they can run the classes without doing the overlap. And then I'm also wondering if, um, if ten is a deal breaker number, or a break, maybe something less.
There's a buffering between, buffering between the classes?
Yeah.
Getting the sense that perhaps the, where we've had to push them to be here and even get the licensure, we may not seem present, so more specific we can get. We may have to dig into that dirt, and they may not get a lot of say before as a commission, if we can't get them here in person, perhaps in staff, if we can't get them here. We'll get those answers for you, so I, I think we've got that clear direction.
Well, in that situation, is there?
I would make a motion to table this, until we have some answers from the applicant.
Steve's made a motion, Toby has seconded the motion, it's a table deciding. Until such time as we can have the applicant present and answer some of the questions that we talked a little bit about here tonight. Any other discussion with that motion? Okay, and we will go to a vote, we'll start with Steve.
Aye.
Steve is aye, Toby?
Aye.
Aye, Toby Scott?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
And, okay, five unanimous. Great, we have unanimous vote, table deciding, uh, for the issues that we've been talking about. All right, thank you, go on to our next item. This item is a final plat approval for the Darling Place Phase Two subdivision at thirty seven South Angel Street. Now, offensive Stephen Shirley Einfield.
So this particular item, I'm wondering if I still have everybody else, sorry, I'm juggling a lot of screens. Okay, so the commission will recognize this property just south of the Angel Street and two hundred north intersection on the east side of the street. It's about an acre and a half of property, and it was rezoned to R one fourteen for a private street subdivision a few months back. There was the concept at the time of rezone, you see the five lots off of a private street with the hammerhead turnaround. And you see it again at the preliminary phase, which the commission's already recommended approval for. We actually just very recently approved in a final plat, the first front two lots. The applicant felt at the time that that's probably all they were ready to develop, there are actually stubs for two properties already in there, where they did some Angel Streets improvements a while back. But as they've kind of looked at it a little bit further, it's not that much more to just complete it. They were already, I don't know if those online can see my mouse, but even with completion of only two lots, they were going to bring utilities to the end. They just weren't planning on putting the road improvements over it yet. And made sense with the cost of mobilizing crews and just that much extra improvement, they'd figure, oh, just do it at once. And so what they're asking for in this is, if we face two, which is those back three lots, where they'll complete those improvements. This is one where we just had a little item to work through that kind of delayed your agenda getting out, but we figured we could correct this instead of waiting a whole month. The plat you have before you may change a little bit, and to describe what that is, right now, at the very end of the street on the east end, they've been planning and preparing for, they have a sewer line, a main, that runs all the way up here, and it actually stubs to Mr. Burton's property to the east. They've been in talks with him to make sure that they could accommodate future development on that property, and that's always been in place. And their plan for that was they put a manhole at the edge of the asphalt, and the sewer district didn't like how long the stub is after that manhole, before it got to that adjacent property owner. So we worked with the sewer district, and the road may extend about twenty feet in this area, if you can see the mouse. So almost an identical layout, it just extends that asphalt just a little bit more and moves the manhole for the sewer district a little closer, so that they felt that that stub was easier to find and connect onto in the future. And so based on that, and all the other reviews and engineering staff's ready to recommend approval of the plat before you, with that condition, before we record, the actual plat meets those sewer district stipulations, so that would be just that minor change. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, any questions, staff? Online, anybody have any questions about Lyle? Hey, not hearing any, uh, do we have the applicant with us?
No, Mr. Einfield is unamiable to see you to attend, so hopefully I could answer any questions if you have them.
And do we have anybody from the public?
Nope.
All right, back to the commission, our commissioners just, you know, as you're all aware, usually the final plat is formally, all of the issues of the commissions that were identified as preliminary plats, and all the address and staff has indicated that, excuse me, the case at work best additional issues that were being brought up, and dealt with those, it sounds like, and Lyle, the recommendation is all of the requirements from the one hundred and five all in that.
Yes.
Issues have been addressed, so this is ready for final plating. If that's the case, commissioners, I think, ready for a motion?
This is Commissioner Nguyen, I'll make the motion to approve final plat for Darling Place, Phase Two subdivision for Stephen and Shirley Einfield at thirty seven south and Angel Street.
All right, so upon the action of the staff. One's made the motion to approve the final plat for the Darling Place Phase Two subdivision, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jared, any other discussion, commissioner?
This is, has it followed up, is that, do we have the language, that it's based on the sewer districts?
Yeah, and you could do that, and this is Mr. Einfield here, who's, so if there were a question, and he'd probably confirm he's amenable to that, he, he met with us. We're just wrapping up almost your item here, so.
I thought we were online, so I'm looking forward online to hearing about this. Oh, I gotta be up there here. I was filthy, so I had to shower.
I just told them about the, for those online, I don't know if you can see, Mr. Einfeld just walked in, just let them know it's in good shape, we've met with the sewer district, and there may be just a small tweak on the east edge that I believe is amenable, we're still looking at the final details of it, but.
No, just connecting this.
It won't connect, it won't, there won't be a street.
Yeah, the sewer line.
Right, right.
So from what he originally said.
Yeah. So, so we're, uh, secondary. I think we're actually applying the final plat as presented by the staff, and I haven't really, certainly, I haven't checked out. Scott, I'm just looking at some of this, and gross, and this. Mr. Einfield, is there anything you want us to know, or you want to add?
No, I, um, I appreciate Lyle himself guiding me through this, being able to one to find a business on our own without, um, the expertise.
All right. All right, great, commissioners, any other discussion on this item? All right, let's go to a vote, let's start with Toby, Toby.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Lyle?
Aye.
I vote aye and steve.
Aye.
All right, that vote is unanimous, to approve the final plat, thank you very much, Mr. Einfield. Here we go.
The hard part begins, actually constructing.
All right, thank you, all right, our next item on the agenda is to discuss potential physical city ordinance changes. With the limited number of regular business items that we have on, this is a good opportunity, staff. I felt this is a good opportunity to go through some of the various ordinances that we've talked about changing, and get a little bit more into that, so, Lyle?
Yeah, a couple of these will look familiar, and my initial intent, and then I failed to get the actual required noticing out in time for a formal public hearing, and for a formal decision on any of these, so what we're doing tonight, just as introduced, is diving into the weeds, discussing it. It's probably appropriate, it's been a while since we've talked about some of these, and a few of them were new, and so there'd be some things to work through, and maybe get a little bit more clarity from the commission on what your interests are, and then I would expect it for probably the next meeting, we hold that formal hearing and get a recommendation from you on whichever ordinances, perhaps all of these ideas that you're ready to move forward with. So I'll just introduce one at a time, we can discuss it. I suspect it could be a little bit open and back and forth, be happy to take questions at any point, don't feel like you can't interrupt me if you've got something, and be very interested in your feedback. A couple, handful of meetings ago, I think it was Commissioner Lyon, talked about, you know, having some interest in us exploring doing with park strips. And so we've only addressed a piece of that, but in staff, we wanted to kind of look at trees, and I think it kind of came about in the topic of water-wise landscaping, we had a lot of turf, a lot of wasted irrigation water for a number of reasons. And so we intend to deal with that also, and I'd be interested in maybe your take on that, but what I have to kind of share with you is our intern, Max Richmond, that's been helping, based on knowing there's some interest in looking at park strips, we internally, staff from our Public Works, Public Safety, code enforcement, have been very interested in trees for a while, because of what their roots and branches do to our park strips and the parkway. So that's kind of the basis, is where this comes in, and ultimately, it comes down to is there's not a lot of regulation in our ordinances, frankly, with the actual park strip. We don't regulate landscaping very much at all when it comes to residential development, particular single family, and where we do regulate it in commercial areas, it's really on the private property side, not so much in the park strip. So you'll see, within our ordinances, essentially, if it's ten feet or greater behind sidewalk, which again is the private property side, tells you what kind of trees and spacing you can have, doesn't tell them what they can and can't do in the city's side of that. So this would be maybe an attempt to start to address that or consider it. And then one area in particular that we looked at is the corners, corners are, for safety reasons, of high importance to take a look at what's going in there. Right now, our language is, as you can see here, nothing may obstruct the view of drivers in the right of way, except for trees print high enough to see past. And in the queer view, it talks about a, no obstruction to view between two and ten feet. And we've interpreted that, right or wrong, but within Caysville, the tree or post is okay. You know, it's a little bit different than a wall, if you have a six inch or ten inch diameter tree, you can still see around that enough, if you have a row of those, it's a problem. But where even a tree is a problem is when it's first growing, all of its limbs and branches are low in that, well under the ten foot range, it spreads out, so it takes several years to get a tree that I would think probably complies with, with the intent of that. So in this particular instance, something that we've talked about as staff, as we met earlier this week even, was probably prohibiting trees in this corner area near intersections. It's been problematic for a number of reasons, primarily visibility, and.
Yeah, you want to fence it more.
The fencing would be another one to do, this one will regulate fencing, so again, it's between that two and ten, so you can't have a fence taller than two feet within this thirty foot corner, so it doesn't, doesn't say what can't be in there, other than just nothing to obstruct it, and the way we've interpreted it, you could argue, maybe it doesn't require an ordinance change, we just need to interpret that trees are a part of that, but I think we're gonna come with a proposal that trees not be approved in there. Fencing could be an interesting one, again, we could pursue in the future, Commissioner, both in this area and the front yard. Go ahead.
Everyone in the league, how they regulate the whole, the fencing is set back at a certain height, and they regulate, you have to have a certain amount of low fencing out to a certain extent. Quarter walk-through, it's intended to have visibility from the closet. Lehigh is very specific in their developed ordinance, and the trees are very specific in the miles on that same, on the same note.
Yeah, we could get their fencings, when you find we don't touch much at all in our ordinances, so we could.
Right where we live, on a corner, might follow, we got a whole situation.
And the vents.
And this, I have like a flying corner, like this, it's one, or smaller angle than ninety degrees.
Yeah.
It's a little bit back, fence throughout the sidewalk, so you got the inch out way far, where you've never seen, you know, far down the road. And also, we go the other direction, neighbors have their, they have many trees, and they're pretty close in spacing.
Right.
And so literally, when you look that way, trees, like, you can't see movement along there, because there's so little space that there's just no reason to build it all.
Oh, that's a great comment, we've bumped into that regularly on acute corners, I could think of a handful. And not even, not always even the corner, but the street geometry, if it's not a perfect grid, these curves, the different shapes that we have, you'll have things that comply perfectly with this, it might have an entirely clear corner, but the shape of the intersection or something may make that difficult. So that could be something we look at even more specifically, I think those are good comments.
Another reason we had problems with the same, like, they were like heights of the trees, based on the power lines, and also the power.
I'll take a peek on how much we looked at Lehigh, I know he looked at several different ordinances. So we'll dig into that, and I think it'd be part of it, and that's partly what he came in with the recommendation at was there are an extreme variety of park strips of the Caysville, but you'll see in the older part of town, we have some very wide park strips, and large trees do well there, and it's part of what makes that area, probably gives them that character that it has. We have areas where there are no park strips, the sidewalk butts right up against curb, and we have some smaller, and we have typically, it's a four foot park strip, is what we're building these days. And so he's recommended some distancing between the trees, the tree types, depending on your park strip. And parties' regulations come in with water efficiency, those that do well in this climate, those that root systems won't interfere or. or are least likely to damage improvements. And then power lines is one of those of overheads, trying to mitigate some of the height issues we do on there and constant trimming. The initial thinking from our development review team and staff was, we may be, maybe this is pessimistic, but late in the game, on regulating this, or how do we, if we prohibit it outright and what we regulate, go through all the existing neighborhoods in town and what they have, and we have to turn them out, there are ways to deal with that, so we could. And then it's, you don't have to have a permit to come plant a tree, most people do it anyway, they won't ask, and perhaps we could require that. But ultimately, there was some hesitancy on how do we enforce it? I think we're willing to enforce the corners because of the safety parameters. It kind of came down to, we're thinking of encouraging and having a specific brochure and pamphlet and kind of advocate what's going to happen in these other areas. And that was the direction that that group thought of. If there's a sentiment or feeling that, no, we ought to make it law, I'm going to stick to it and enforce it. We'd be certainly open to that, but that was that recommendation is, we think we can encourage better planting and better development, but enforce the corners for safety purposes. And then I'll close maybe on this with just one more. When you think of corners, again, it's street corners. We don't regulate near driveway. Maybe there's reason to do that, but you know, a similar issue, cars coming in and out, can I see the kid on the sidewalk, whether it's a fence, shrubbery, planting, street, you know, so that's not something Kaysville City in the past has regulated, and that could come into this under a similar rationale, is why we're forcing or mandating what takes place near intersections. That's, that's this topic, I'll zip it, and if anyone has any questions, comments, ideas, direction, well, for us, let me know.
So you don't have, not a specific ordinance.
Correct.
This is more of a discussion.
Correct.
Maybe the direction to go.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's good to have some guidance in there, some additional guidance. Of course, if you put it in ordinance form, as you already know, it will have an issue really later on, how strictly are you going to enforce it? And if you don't enforce it, then what is it really mean? So something, consider, I like your idea of having some kind of brochure, this guideline, but strictly enforcing in the corner view areas, I think that's, that's definitely, that's a safety issue. The others are all nice things to do. But if somebody, if somebody, you know, plants the long kind of tree or puts something in there that the city would really like, is it worth, you know, writing a citation?
Alright, do you have comments, Commissioner?
We've got over time, would be interesting is, we don't really have this, but a lot of, a lot of cities have, in a forum-based type environment, maybe very unique streets or neighborhoods where they really do want to create a specific looking field. If we identify something like that over time, Main Street or whatever, then that could be an area where we say, yeah, we'll enforce it here. So we'll probably start with this, and maybe that's something just to have in the vacuum lines that, you know, we could start doing some of that.
Any more online, Commissioner?
Uh, this is Jared. Just a couple of comments. Are we being pushed by the water district to conserve more water and to find ways to put restrictions on people to reduce the water usage?
They're not, I would say they're not applying pressure to the city to do that. They'll often, when we meet with them, and that's one of their goals, they bring that up, that's good policy and good practice, so they promote and encourage it.
I know Jordan Valley Water District has some really pretty strict guidelines, and they will actually, they're actually enforcing that, they're actually requiring that. I know Weaver Basin has talked about that, and maybe, I think they have, they have designed guidelines, right?
Yeah, Weaver Basin, uh, they, they have some great example properties you can go see, they have some guidelines of best practices that they distribute and will help out. And they'll certainly encourage it. Uh, certainly we could look at it, yeah, this, uh, I think that that would be the next thing we want to look at. Um, I'm inclined, if, if the corner thing is kind of a low hanging fruit, we'll probably have an ordinance before you next time. Uh, what I'll probably do is get, get to work on dealing with the water and other maybe lower profile type landscaping, and how we can regulate that specifically within these areas as well.
Jared, just to answer your question, meetings I've had through the past and recently, Weaver Basin is moving towards metering. And so yes, they are moving towards.
You'll pay more if you, yeah. I guess my, the bigger question is, if we're being pushed to conserve water, maybe we look at more of a holistic approach. You know? Sorry? I'm just saying, if, if we're being asked to conserve more and come up with maybe a strategy, I would, I would recommend more of a holistic approach, it kind of looking at everything that uses water on our grounds. And I can tell you that to go to zero escaping, which I think is absolutely beautiful, but you pay a premium for that over just planting grass. So people will pay more to go to zero escaping and reduce their water usage, but if, if they start metering the water and charging more, that's another way to, to force people to come up with ways of conserving water is you pay more and then you conserve more. But zero escaping landscaping is, is not cheap. So, so I guess the bigger picture is, do we want to even go down that road?
Yeah, and I think that'd be the question we'd love from you.
I think you can encourage it, I think you can have that direction, it just depends on what you're having to do. I think the metering coming, and I know Benchman just got, I know, I know, the, the district to the south of us in Arlington, they're installing meters, and then the Davis, uh, the Davis Canal District, we're on here, they're going to start metering also.
Davis Weaver Canal has about, we're split with three primary water districts, they take about the half third of Kaysville. They've been doing meters for three or four years. They don't charge per meter, but they're installed in hundreds of home in Kaysville. Hay Creek similarly is the middle area in town roughly. And then as I said, Benchman's a little bit newer to the game, but yeah, they've, I've not heard that, that's interesting to know, if they've got some planning outside where they can replace their meters on their system. It's, they're all gearing up to where you're going to pay per use someday.
Control. Uh, you go to Las Vegas or Phoenix and you pay a lot of money to water your property, and, and so people automatically put in zero escaping to avoid the water bill, and that's one way to, to get people to conserve. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll dive onto the next, uh, topic, Jared, but.
Yeah, and then, I'm wrapping this up while, so you're going to do some more comments and bring something back for us.
Yeah, what I think I'll do is I'll have an ordinance specific to the corners to start. And then I'm going to have more, like in an intro discussion, I had more work on landscaping and water-wise language. I'll probably prepare it in a couple of different ways. Well, we'll probably prepare on what we want, and then we'll get the direction from you next time based on that, and further ideas. Is this an ordinance, is it encouragement? Because honestly, we don't have a whole lot even right now, but just as, here's some good encouragement, and there's, there's a few things we do, but we could look at it both directions, and we will be back. So the next. This one does have some ordinance language with it. However, again, it's not a formal public hearing, and so we can't make a formal decision on it, but we can get a lot more specific on what your thinking is on this. Put in a couple slides on this from a presentation that was done a while back from John Jensen and Meg Ryan from APA Conference in Utah. And that was kind of interesting, we may have talked about it before, but if you're not familiar with an accessory dwelling unit, they come in different varieties. The idea is on the same property as an existing home. You might have a basement apartment, garage apartment, something in a bonus room, or you know, there are a lot of different ways to accommodate it. But essentially, you can get some separation for some privacy and independence for additional bodies to live in a dwelling. And, you know, I thought this was interesting, and I've seen some other statistics for Los Angeles or different areas. You know, there's a lot of concern, okay, we start allowing people to have this second unit, granted, maybe it's got some restrictions on it, on a property. Everybody's going to do it, suddenly we're going to have twice the population of Kaysville, because every lot's going to put one of these on there, but you see, you know, this is a little bit dated, it's 2017 date, I think, from this presentation, so I'm sure it's going to be a little bit. About 1%, and in a place like Portland, Oregon, uh, it's pretty low, maybe because it's so urban, it doesn't come up as much, but these, these areas, not everybody does, and there's demand and there's use for them, but I don't think they're going to sprawl, they go out of control, that every property in town's going to want to do it. Here's some numbers in Utah, so a little more close to home. You know, Salt Lake City, at least at the time of this, less than 200 officially recognized ADUs. Linden Pleasant Grove has some higher ones near the college town, right? Alpine, Layton City is 60. The numbers aren't on here, but I know Arlington City has had in their ordinances for many years, the ability to do an accessory dwelling unit. I think as an attached unit, not necessarily detached. And, yeah, my conversation with them is, have they changed? I know they wanted to. They've not, they don't get many applications for people doing at least the old basement style one, so it's not been a problem in their community. I suspect we would see similar trend in Kaysville. But yeah, it sounds like from Commissioner Lyon, that they just fairly adopted an ordinance where they will now allow the detached accessory unit type structures as well, so. Uh, just some stuff I thought was interesting, you know, you're going to have strange people coming in town, a lot of these are being used for family members, so you kind of have that now, Kaysville City allows a true mother-in-law apartment, where if it truly is family, then it's just part of the single-family dwelling, and we let people build spaces like that. And they're doing that anyway, but you couldn't do that in a detached setting. So if you wanted to put your kid or your parent in a basement apartment, we could do that under today's ordinances in Kaysville, but you couldn't put them above a detached garage or in a granny flat in the backyard. And that would be something you could consider as part of this change. They tend to be smaller units than the homes, and probably, you'll see what the ordinance I proposed, they're going to be on average, much smaller than the homes we built in Kaysville. Have less people, or for less cars, is what this is showing here. And then this just shows kind of the trends with the cost of housing, this lifestyle, the millennial group, or whatever happens to be. People stay home a lot longer, we have aging demographics that, and you know, this COVID pandemic, people are less interested in assisted living centers. They may be prefer to age in a different place, in a different way. This could be something that accommodates those different trends and housing needs that we're seeing. So the ordinance that we put together at staff, and this is something that we've essentially come to consensus on as staff, certainly be open to changes, modifications, different direction, whatever happens to be for the commission. I'll probably go through it. With it, there's not too much, it's basically one page, split in half, so it shouldn't take too long, and then we'll take different comments through each section, if there's something missing that we could add in, if something needs to be changed, it's not clear, like different numbers, please let me know and be happy to take that in consideration. So the purpose of it is to establish parameters by which the ADU is allowed within Kaysville City. Should be allowed only where expressly permitted in the zoning ordinance, and must be approved by Kaysville City Planning Commission. So you would have purview over that as essentially a conditional use. What it comes down to is, I put this next one in there, an ADU may be permitted on a flag lot. It's on a flag lot, it's very specific that you can't have a duplex in our ordinance, so I thought I'd clarify, perhaps an ADU is appropriate. That's why it's there, whether you agree or not, let us, let us know. Any, any questions there? Is it something that you think you wouldn't want to see as a commission? The reason why it would be a problem on a flag lot? Before I move on. Okay, uh, number three, an ADU may be permitted as either a unit located within the primary dwelling or as a detached structure on the same lot as a permitted dwelling. Provisions to all accessory dwelling units that apply, so 3A, number I, where permitted, no more than one ADU may be allowed per lot. Number two, the unit must be equal to or smaller in size than the main dwelling on a property. And then I think later, we actually put in a specific square footage limitation, so it'd probably be rare that that's even a question, but this one is a little interesting. Number three, we saw this in a lot of example ordinances, the owner of the property must occupy either the primary dwelling or the ADU. So, I don't know if anyone has concerns there, if we'd be open to letting people lease both the dwelling and the ADU, or if you like having the owner on site. It may be a little tricky to monitor and regulate, but if, if you have it in there, then we could at least enforce it if it became a problem. We, it wouldn't be hard for somebody to verify at day one when they come in, or at least if you have some connection of ownership or to the property, but soon as they get our permission, they might then put together a lease the next day. No, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but I think we do, if you have multiple properties, I think by the state, if it's three or more, then you have to be licensed somewhere to.
That's a, that's a, that's one way to kind of regulate that, is if the city does require a business license for a house. And you wouldn't, if it's a business license, then you weren't living in, you know, the main structure of the ADU.
And that's a conversation, I think, I've had with different commissioners in the past on short-term rental, uh, you know, I guess there's long-term and short-term, we don't necessarily license either technically, unless they have multiple of possibly considering regulating more closely short-term rental, Airbnb, the RBO types, and taxing them or transit stays, that could be something the city could, could get into. And I put two parking spaces in addition to the main required for the dwelling. So our ordinance requires that every single family dwelling have at least two parking spaces, so this would bring it up to four. You saw the statistics that generally they have one extra car on average. I don't know if those areas that this data comes from is right, but again, you tell me if that's too excessive. And rare is the home in Kaysville that, you know, three-car garage is the new two-car, plus your driveway spaces. So even though we only require two, almost everything in town has four because of the two-car garage and the two-car wide driveway. They're already meeting these minimums as a conditional use permit, you could look at it, if we change that to one, but it goes through a conditional use process, and you find a reason why, yeah, in this case, you need an extra parking space, the commission, I think, would have the ability to require that. So maybe one is an appropriate number. What's that? One is the loneliness number? I'm moving fast for anyone online, so I'll pause for a second if there was a comment at this point, I know the lag is a little weird. Okay, number five then, V, same address. It's going to be the same tax ID, same address. It would just be unit B. Number six, occupancy shall be limited to one family as defined in our ordinances. Except that occupancy shall not exceed two total individuals where there's no family relation. So our current family definition in Kaysville City is anyone related by blood, marriage, adoption, guardianship qualifies as family. Or up to five people. So this is saying, okay, if you're related, you can be in there. If you're just roommates in that space, two instead of five. So that would be the distinction. See a number, where was I? Seven there at the bottom. Upon approval from the Kaysville City Planning Commission to have an ADU, a building permit must be pursued. To confirm compliance with applicable building code for occupancy as a separate unit. And this was important to our building official. Some cities, they still look at it as a single family dwelling. So if you did a basement ADU. They wouldn't require some separation of. Fire rated between or maybe egress and utilities. He felt that that would be appropriate to do that because a lot of these are operating independently and they kind of really do function independently. It's just safer to have that. But I, it's fuzzy in the building code as to whether or not that's required. So his in. Request was we could clarify that within our ordinances. So that he's not fighting that come building code time. That would be something of interest to the commission. You can't just simply. Close the door in your basement and call it a legal second unit. If somebody wanted to do this. They're going to have to go through some costs to upgrade the structure or building code. So if that's. Not desirable, that would be of interest to you to know about. Let us know. Concerns before I leave this page?
Lyle, I had a question.
Please.
This is Scott. I think the, the way the ordinance reads now, there's got to be separation of power meters and utility services. Would this, would this pull that regulation out or can you say you're a basement apartment? Can you use the same? You know, main drain systems and your main power services with maybe its own breaker box internal. Because I, in the research I've done on ADU ordinances, it's the additional requirements like having a separate HVAC system. That makes them financially unvi- not viable for a lot of people. Versus having something like. An ordinance that requires the second unit to be able to maybe maintain its own heat and AC. Which would be more like a zone HC, but not a whole like HVAC system that's separate. So maybe that's way too in the details and you'll start to figure that out as these get built, but. I just worry about setting the bar so high that it's going to be very difficult for any property owner to actually afford. To construct out or reconfigure a basement and meet some of those, those hurdles.
Yeah. So I think it's a great question. That's something that we discussed and whether we got to the right spot or not. I, I know this is. Long in the works, previous council and others that have asked us to be looking into this. And as we did the last general plan. Direction there was, you know, let's, let's make this easier than harder. It allows us to regulate it. Some of it happens already and this formalizes, we know what's there. We can make sure it's done right and appropriately. So right there at the very top of this page, the number one, an ADU shall not operate on separate utility meters from the primary dwelling. So we're not expecting new meters, new connections, new stubs. Out there, we want them on those same meters. They could do a sub-meter if they wanted, but they're just going to have one Kaysville City power meter. And part of what that means is no additional impact fees. Unless I think we put that in notes, we've done that in different revisions. So we felt that. You know, they would pay for their use technically. They're not having to do new sewer connections or power connections. So there's a part of that Scott, I guess, where, yeah, we're not requiring a full-on, everything new, complete separation. But it's probably not as far as you're saying where, yeah, we were thinking internally within the structure, there are still some operating separations on the systems.
Okay, that's helpful. And then just a, a point of like a language clarification, I guess, is that. And we'll get there, but 3A, A item two, so II. The unit must be equal to or smaller in size than the main dwelling, you know, on the property. And then coming down to where you're, you're getting there on the 900 square foot requirement. I would, if you can, I would have either 3A two, say something that the unit. Must not be more than 50% of the property or, or sorry, more than or greater than the size of the existing home. And then the 900 square feet, but I wouldn't make it like, it can be this big or smaller and then pare it down to 900. Like if you can. Kill one of those lines and have the size requirement noted one time would, would be more clear. And then when we, when we get to the size, I'll, I've got another comment, but we can wait until we get to that point.
Yeah, and. I appreciate the feedback on it. I think it's great. I hope when I make responses, it doesn't sound like a disagreement. So the rationale, my thinking, which. Probably didn't accomplish that. I think if somebody had a basement apartment per se, they had a 3,000 square foot home. You're probably going to have 1,500 square feet of basement, let's just say half of your gross floor area in your house. We probably wouldn't care if that was all used in the basement for a separate living unit. It's probably more on the detached structures that we were thinking maybe some limitation. But I'll tell you some reason why even I think that may not be necessary and part of that's within this language. So. I think we can do that Scott, what you're thinking.
I see that now that I see now how A is within the dwelling unit. And then that, that meets my question because I was going to say if, if you have a. 3,000 square foot home divided equally on three floors and your bottom 1,000 square feet was going to be an entire ADU. I don't think it should say the 900 square feet. So thank you. That, that was clarifying my next comment. And then I would have that similar comment. If you have like a four-car garage that's 25 by 50. Which maybe that's specific. That's the size of my four-car garage. I have a four-car shotgun garage. So it's 1,100 plus square feet. If I were to build. An ADU on the second story of that, it would be more than 900 square feet. And I don't think I probably, you know, I'm not probably unique in Kaysville and having a large garage. Would that be not permitted?
And that is where I agree with you completely. So that's, I wrote the 900, but I think it's a little funny that we allow. An accessory structure that may not have, be used as a dwelling. And it's, there are limits on the size of those structures. But it's up to 3,000 square feet or about 20% of the lot area. There's different ways we figure that. So to Scott's point, I, I think if, if we would allow a structure that large, whether somebody lives in it or not. Maybe we don't need to restrict it just because somebody lives in it. So I think that's very legitimate. Okay. Well, that about covered this page. Yeah. So I, you're going to look at those two types. So are we okay with detached accessory dwelling units? We want to limit to one variety or another. And yeah, those square footage and size separations. You'll see here again, Scott under B, part of the main dwelling, no more than 50%. Maybe we could throw that out too. Again, if it's within the structure, wherever they separate that, maybe it doesn't matter, but. But that it must have a separate entrance, be built to meet building code. For a separate unit, including fire separation and HVAC system. So it's very direct to your question on that is, you know, we're not requiring the new meters, but again, we're separating those items. If that's too overbearing to create these units, then we need to scratch that. Building code, again, I mean, we think is very vague and very unclear as to what that would require. And so we chose putting it in here to clarify what we thought made sense, but we will look for your direction.
Lyle, I think that B1, no more than 50% of the living space of a dwelling may be used for an ADU. Could be struck from this. And the reason is that if I were a homeowner, building an addition onto a home, say a Rambler. That was going to be a quote ADU that was larger than 50%. Then what I would do is say, no, I'm building a new primary structure and the remaining old little house will be my ADU. And so it, I mean, unless you're going to require them to address the ADU as B, and that's how you're going to like keep the parameters. Otherwise I think people would just be creative about what they do and don't call the ADU. And I'd be more concerned about total lot coverage and reduction in overall. Like landscaping and open space on the property or reduction in overall parking ability or something like. Structures that just way overbuild a lot, which I, I think happened in. Like Holiday and Cottonwood Heights area where they were tearing down 1,500 square foot homes and putting up like 4,500 and 5,000 square foot homes. Until the ordinances started to, you know, pare those down in some of the historic areas. I'd be more concerned about that than whether or not someone's like basement plus part of the upstairs is more than 50% of a living area.
That's a great comment. Would the commission be open to? So if we're not necessarily limiting, because I think Scott's absolutely right. In that case, they're going to get around that. Would you want to put a limit to parking spaces per, for every? I don't know, for every thousand square feet of accessory dwelling in it, you need a parking space or something. Maybe that's a way to address these different size issues that could come up. It sounds like this group, from what I'm hearing, isn't concerned about the overall size of them. You'll get the chance to look at them case by case. If, if the lot coverage is okay, we're not changing setbacks for these for any reason. If it's within what you could have built anyway for your shed or garage. Then why not let somebody use it for habitable space? A question with that that will come up when these other ones and. So Josh is, or sorry, not Josh, Commissioner Hess's example. Of maybe just adding that second floor to the garage to use for accessory dwelling space. Our current height limitation within our accessory dwelling in it might make that a little tricky to do. I think Commissioner Sonoff, he and I have talked about this a little bit on how it forces different architecture and slopes. So that could be something that comes out of this. If we're interested in people being able to use that more. And we might look at the size and height allowances and how that works to see if it's too restrictive or not. The rest of it, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Lyle, I'll just, I'll just pile on that. My take on that aspect, well, two things actually is, I think. I think we're probably in agreement, almost, I would assume unanimously that ADUs are, are a good idea that we want to try to foster. So. I would err on the side of number one. Agreeing with Scott's comment and, and. Giving more flexibility where we can. And then two, with flexibility extending into even the architecture. So that it, it. It doesn't exclude people who might want to do one of these. And they look at the, their lot and architecture requirements or the, the height requirements. I know this isn't really architecture, but height requirements, it affects architecture. They'll look at the height requirements and they might be turned off. I think we want to try to make it, you know. As, as. Welcoming, if you will, as possible to people who want to use these. But you know, keep in mind that, you know, we have, we want to have some reasonable restrictions, but we don't need to have restrictions where, where there's not a. Where there's not a problem that, you know, that is being identified or that. We don't want to over-regulate, I guess, on this and err on the side of less regulation to encourage use. That's. A long story short and a rambling story short, so.
Thank you. Anybody, all that's left in here is, I know this is getting super fast. Defining it and it's a legal unit, second house on a lot that's occupied by another primary dwelling. And then there are more pages within your packet that I had put on here, just says where it can go. And it's essentially our single family zones. That would allow for it. So that was the, essentially the remainder of the other eight pages duplicates time and again. So there are other comments on this. There is a lot of interest from our residents, the public. There are many people who have, I get calls almost every day. Can I? Do something about my garage or my backyard? Almost always it's for family members, a lot of aging parents, kids with disabilities that people want to keep close. They want to have these. They want to be independent and feel like they've got their space where they need them close. It comes down to some price point issues. I think of the things we put in our general plan amendment last December. This probably produces one of the most truly affordable options out there. It also gives some dynamic as you change your situation in your home. We build a lot of big homes in Kaysville. We've got a lot of square footage. And we've got a lot of big families, but families grow, change, kids move out. What do you do with the other six bedrooms and so forth? And this would require maybe some adjustments based on HVAC and requirements we've got in there, et cetera. But it makes good use of space and I think it'd be fun to see how this shapes up.
Is everybody, so this is already happening. Why don't we just, why don't we just move?
Yeah, and our building officials very, very much on that were. I don't know that it gets too shady in Kaysville and how people construct them. I think people generally. Do things with some quality and they put it together right, but. His ability to say, okay, that's built, it's safe, it's appropriate and actually regulate it. We'll have people regularly come in and we know, we'll talk to them. Building this garage and yeah, I want to finish the space above it, you know, but it's got a bathroom and a little kitchenette, but it's my office and. It may be in some occasion, but you know, eventually somebody's going to buy that and they're not going to know that and they're going to have somebody in there and. And so he can't necessarily enforce building code regulation for a dwelling. Even though we assume that's probably what's going to happen there. And so there's some safety implications there as to. How it's put together. So anyway, this. Well, we'll have this one with those changes, I think, for next meeting.
Can I ask just one more quick question? And I'm sure you've thought about this, but on this. I think in some single, and I, I looked this up when we built our house. So before I was planning commission member, so it may have changed and correct me if I'm wrong, but. That for some single family homes, a two-family dwelling was already permitted as part of a conditional use. But it was limited to so many of them per block face or per like 500 feet. And so it felt like it was a first come, first served. Did, would this negate that portion of the code? So. You know, me and two others in, on my street in Hill Farms or whatever could get the same ADU provision?
Here's how I, I think about this. Hopefully it's written this way. My intent is this is. So it speaks within that, Commissioner Hess is exactly right. In all of our R1 districts, you can have a two-family dwelling by conditional use. So long as there aren't more than three within 500 feet. So it's that first come, first served. It's only so many within a certain distance. To me, this is not a two-family dwelling. It's defined as something different. And so we would not be limiting. Someone could still have a duplex and you could have an ADU next door. I think they're different things. Read through this, make sure you think it actually does make that separation. That, that would be my recommendation is we don't necessarily need to limit these in their proximity. If, if you think it's necessary to do a restriction or if you don't think it reads that way, let me know. But I, I think it's defined in my mind. Differently than a two-family dwelling. Go through that process.
Okay.
That, that could be something that comes into play if, if there becomes concern through the process again, that we're going to have too many of these around and it's going to change the whole dynamic of town. Maybe you want to restrain it, but my thinking was based on the data, they're not as. Maybe you want to restrain it, but my thinking was based on the data, they're not as prevalent as people fear they might be. They're probably already there anyway, if they're going to be in that area, I guess is another comment. So I didn't see the reason to restrict.
All right. And then, and then this is my last comment and then I'll stop making our meeting longer and apologize. But, um, does, does the commission feel like there should be a minimum square footage requirement? Or can an ADU be considered a tiny house as a trailer on wheels that then has a permanent in some ways hook up to a power connection? And, um, a water sewer outfall from the property? Um, and those, you know, those can be road going trailers of like eight by 15 feet or something like that. So is there a minimum? And did I, did I miss it? Is there a minimum square footage that these need to be? Um, or what's like the minimum hurdle to clear if somebody wants to create an ADU and rent, rent it out on their property?
I would say there should be not a minimum. And then in regards to, um, in what shape or form, uh, I think let's leave it up to the creativity of these folks. I mean, if you look at it, you know, before, what 10 years ago, we never heard of tiny homes and now all of a sudden they're propping up, whether it's for additional family usage or for homeless veterans, et cetera. And you know, they become all shape or forms. If it is a trailer, so be it. If we want to categorize it under ADU, so be it. You know, let's try to, just like we said earlier, uh, let's empower folks to help the family members out. But let's not put too many restrictions.
Amen, Juan. Thank you.
One, one restriction I think there would be for the consideration of the commission. I'll have to research it, but I believe our ordinance requires anything used for dwelling has to be on a permanent foundation. So there's going to be some building code and some of that stuff that it's not going to be completely free for all of anything that can connect to utilities. Um, that would probably be about the minimum type requirement we have.
I know when I lived in Highland, they might.
A, uh, building foundation.
Right.
Well, I know in Highland, when I went down there, they went through similar discussion like this, the city council and through the planning commission. And people wanted to do portable, the city council came back and it's permanent foundation, but you had, you have units or dwellings down there. There were basically ripe sheds or tough sheds and they converted into two-story units that now have sewer water out. They're renting, they're renting five to $600 a month.
Is that a good thing or bad thing in your experience?
Well, for students of U of U or U of U, it's interesting because they're long back from that. It's just students who are at home still having, um, what?
And I think what, what we would hope from staff is because of the building code requirement and our ability to now actually regulate them. It would at least meet a minimum standard, no matter what it starts out as or how they, they get there. We would make sure there are at least certain safety minimums in place and perhaps a right shed type or whatever, the tough shed bill converted, it would be appropriate.
Yeah, I would say this minimum, um, and then as things progress, uh, obviously, you know, we're going to see people push the boundaries, hopefully not too much. And then we can revisit that, uh, whether it's, you know, a year, two, three, four, five years from now, but that would be my recommendation.
And, and you'll notice in this ordinance, uh, we may want to add something for Commissioner Hess's comments. We don't. Uh, maybe there is a way that it's covered. I apologize. It's been a while. There's no minimum lot size that this can go on. Um, what it references. I guess right here, so all building structures under B or C I, where AD is located show meet the requirements of accessory structures. So that's where it talks about placement, rear yard. And we'll talk about that a little bit here in the next size, lot coverage. That, that is regulated there, but theoretically this could go on any lot, no matter the size, quarter acre, an acre. We saw a lot that had minimum acreage requirements. Again, we kind of took, didn't think that was necessary if somebody thought they could do it, but wanted to put stuff like that, let us know.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great. That to me says that people with smaller homes on smaller lots may build smaller ADUs and those are affordable. And people who have huge lots and mansion homes and crazy, you know, crazy creative ideas of pool houses that are ADUs can build those. And, and, uh, we can have a variety of those. I think that'd be really interesting.
Yep, I like that.
Okay, well, we'll come back with the public hearing on this and try and incorporate these comments. So. And, uh, yeah, it'll be exciting. So this accessory building kind of ties into that a little bit. Uh, this is one that we did actually hold a public hearing on. It's been about five months. So my personal take would be we'll hold another public hearing. Didn't have anybody in the last one, but just to make sure that, you know, it's not dropped and forgotten. Um, this is the image you saw last time and the direction from the commission was probably too much extra flexibility, uh, from what the current regulations are. Um, so you can see on the left side of the screen in white, here's where you can put an accessory structure currently. Um, I actually noticed there's some errors in it, the way I drew it up. Um, I'll point those out probably in the next slide a little bit better. Um, but then we talked about looking at these areas in black on, or the dark gray on the right side of the screen of maybe allowing, uh, the way I termed it was small accessory structures. So these were 200 square feet or less, garden sheds, under 10 feet in height. Um, and I believe, oh, this kind of calls it out. Uh, the commission was open to maybe getting more leniency in certain areas. For example, on the top right, we have a lot that has two streets, uh, a street against the backyard and a street against the front yard. Uh, there are a lot of these along the frontage road. There are a handful up and down 200 north and they're just different areas. To allow people to, generally you'd have to be 20 feet off that back property line because it abuts a street to put an accessory structure there. And I think the direction I got is I'd be okay on those lots to allow consideration of, again, the small, shorter, not too big accessory structures to be closer to the feet, to the street. Um, so that's something that would remain. I don't have actual language with it here, but, uh, this is one that I caught in error. So the actual rear yard is the furthest point back on the home, real line all the way across the lot. And then go back from there. So if you can see this red dashed line on this bottom right block, uh, that's currently the rear yard. And, um, we've had a handful of requests since that people want to build just a little bit closer kind of in the side there. It'll be a covered porch or just a jog in the house that goes back. And, you know, I, I think those were reasonable considerations that we weren't able to allow, uh, to do that. Um, I have some thoughts of maybe how that may or may not work. Um, but that's something maybe to, to consider in this that we didn't last time. And then I think we would have axed these side yards. So we talked about maybe somebody could have a tool shed or garden shed on the side of their home. And my, uh, follow-up was the direction at that time was, uh, we probably ought to leave those open for different reasons, fire protection, utility clearance. Um, we'll not start letting it encroach there. So. Again, instead of redoing the whole picture in detail, I just xed through those areas that I think the commissions previously agreed to ignore or, or sorry, to exclude. And then the last one was side yard on a corner lot against a public street. So again, currently is on the left, you, uh, excuse me, the home has a 30-foot front yard setback and eight-foot side yard setback. And the other side yard is 20 feet against the street. So this area here, which many people consider to be their backyard, they'll fence it off. It's their backyard for intents purposes, other than we won't let them put sheds and garden sheds and such in that area. We thought maybe we'd open that up last time. And the concern came up from the commission, well, what if that side yard is somebody's front yard? So that's kind of this example here. Um, so this is showing, okay, we'll eliminate that if that's still the direction. Um, I made a note here. Uh, that's kind of a timing issue. So in this case, um, we have two corner lots next to each other. A lot of times you'd have another mid-block, standard mid-street lot. Uh, but if this person builds first, it may not be this person's front yard because you can choose which side is your front yard. And not only where your front door is, but where you take your setback. So before they build, they come in and say, okay, uh, yeah, I'm going to put my driveway here. And my front door over here and, and they'll actually have the front yard setback be the driveway setback and the front door be on the side yard. And then they can do all kinds of different things like that. So I wasn't sure if with that thought, if the commission felt there were a better way to manage simply saying, no, you cannot have a small accessory structure in the side yard abutting a street. If it abuts somebody's front yard, um, probably as easy and clean as just to say, no, you, you can't have it in the side yard abutting a street. Um, I did see Leighton City, for example, says if it abuts another front yard and, and I reached out to them, I still don't know how they handle it. If, if you predate, uh, the next house, I think you're just grandfathered in. So it's kind of a first come, first served scenario. And perhaps that's appropriate to continue that way, if, if we're interested in doing that. So. Uh, where it's been a while, I just wanted to get the commission's take on, um, one item at a time. We'll write up the ordinance to accomplish that again and then be back. Are we okay with the double frontage lots here in the top right? Saying, yes, you could do a small accessory structure in what would normally be a 20-foot setback from the street. Again, that's a backyard abutting a street, which is pretty rare, but. And, and you'll probably remember from last time, there are several dozen, perhaps more existing examples of this around town, unfortunately already. And that's, that's partly where this comes up is over many decades, people put them up. They're not required to get building permits under 200 square feet. We don't know about them. And in most cases, it's, it's a non-issue. So we, in a lot of ways, just be recognizing something that's there that hasn't been, in this particular example. Uh, the next question is the side yard. I think I got a couple of comments already on that. Any reason why we do want to let something in the side yard between homes? Keep that one out. Okay. Um, what's the commission's thought on, uh, this scenario? I think I even have another better example. So this is what we hand to people and they come in now and they want to do a shed or a detached structure. This is a little handout we give them. Shows where their rear yard is at the furthest back point on the house. And this just gives that example. So this house on the right side, rear yard starts behind that for this back point. Would you be interested or would it make sense to the commission to allow rear to technically to put, be defined closer? Uh, you can see here's an example. If, if this was either enclosed or a covered patio, a lot of people will love the idea of bringing those detached structures closer. So they'll have to bring utilities or driveways quite as far back. Um, it goes closer to the front of the lot than the back of this part of the structure. So currently we would not allow it. Um, but there's a lot of, a fair amount of interest in doing something like that. And if, if, if that makes sense, we could redefine the rear yard just a little bit. The, the problem that I've identified would be if somebody were really creative with their architecture, they could just do a really small jag in the house. So they could bring something really close. So I'd probably set a minimum distance back, uh, you know, saying a wall has to be at least maybe 25 feet and probably a standard parking stall in a garage. Uh, you know, at least some distance back from the front of the actual house where it starts. So that somebody can't just do a bulb out here for two or three feet, you know, or 10 feet even. And, and then put something right up against their neighbor's side yard. Yeah, right towards the front of their homes. And, but if the general idea is there, we could write something up for that. And then the, the last question I think is these corner lots, um, what's, what's the take there for the commission? We, we continue to march the route and we just don't allow it? Do we allow it if it's against a, not against the front yard? What's your pleasure? Everyone's there.
Well, I'd say propose it. Let's see my.
That's, that's one way to do it, right? Okay. And then on this image here is what I wanted to bring up for the very last, I don't know, I think. On the bottom of the screen are those building height elevations. Uh, so again, we, we kind of brought this up. I didn't listen to all of our entire discussion and I don't know the exact direction that's given on it. Previously, we allowed for the height of a structure to be determined as the average height between the top of the wall and the roof. That's still how we do it for a main building. So, uh, you could square off under this example of a right elevation. Instead of doing a hip roof type structure, it would come straight out and over, and that would still meet that height requirement. Because the average height is under, based on its distance. Um, about four years ago, it's probably been that long, we, we changed that ordinance and said, okay, we'll let you build a little bit of taller wall. But we're going to regulate what your roof looks like a little bit to deal with some side angles and light and things like that. So that's where this envelope came in. Um, we have a lot of people who have tall toys, RVs and things like that. They wanted 14 foot, 15 foot garage walls. And, um, instead of having to maneuver a vehicle and do a 300-point turn to get it far enough off of the property line to meet those kind of heights, we, we gave some allowance to get the taller wall, regulated the roof. Uh, but this is one where, you know, we've seen the idea of, if you wanted to do a usable space above a garage, a cottage house or something like that, then we're restricting the use on that based on this architectural roof treatment from our height. So we could address that at the same time as these others where we're looking at this accessory dwelling ordinance, if there are different ideas, uh, ways to do that. We have had a couple examples where, um, people built some pretty tall accessory structures. And the way that this works, you could have a 30-foot building right on the property line. Essentially, it's to the peak of the roof. It's just that you slope away from your neighbor to get to the 30 feet as you go up. And so we've seen that in a few cases where it's been a concern to neighbors and how people utilize the ordinance as it stands today. For the most part, it's, it's been fine. We get a lot of people that aren't too happy that they have to put a hip roof on one side of the building. They'd rather use a standard gable and wall for space needs and it's probably cheaper or something that typical to build. Um, is there interest in exploring that issue any further from the commission? I've not prepared specific alternate examples. Yeah. So for example, if you are one foot away from the property line, the wall can be 13 feet tall. And then as long as you have something less than a 612 pitch, it can go all the way up to 30 feet to the peak of the roof. As that's the height regulation for the zone. You don't really see that often, but that's technically what you could do under this. The old ordinance was you, see if I remember this right. I think it said that if you were within five feet of a property line, you could not be any taller than 12 feet. And that again was averaged to the midpoint of the roof. So the total height of the structure rather than just that, uh, anyway, the specific spot. So you could have a, for example, a wall that was 10 feet high and then 10 feet worth of pitch. So maybe it's a 20-foot tall structure. Because the slope roof average is only five feet higher than the wall, that's 15, or what did I tell you? 12 feet was the height limit? I'm giving you a bad number. So you have a 10-foot high wall and four feet worth of roof. Midpoint of that roof is 12 feet and that could be within a foot or up to five feet. And then to go taller than that, for every two additional feet you went from your neighbor, you got an extra foot. So it was much more gradual in how fast you could go vertical than this is. Um, but again, based on that midpoint measurement, depending on what somebody built, it could be worse than this and, or I shouldn't say worse, it could be taller. Um, probably generally speaking, it wasn't. Probably generally speaking, it wasn't taller. It was probably a smaller building. But you you have the standard cables and the really tall walls right up against the property line rather than the gradual pitch from the roof. We could go back to something like that and we could look at other ordinances. We could leave it be. Well, we will be back then unless the commission has other direction on any other ordinances we haven't talked about. That's what I've prepared for this evening. We we can just, yeah, we can speak to that. I know that was of interest from the commission last time I've not been able to prepare the material. I put something in the staff report from Leighton City as an example. Like I could have put that up here just to show that. They allow them, um, some other jurisdictions do their highly uncommon that people are approving them. But they keep it as an option on their. Their books. Um, I've been asked to look at a couple others that we're still hoping to do some research on. Okay, was that just now he sent it or previously? Okay, I may have missed it. So sorry if I did. So I might be happy to chat with those other than what you have in there or just to show that someone else does it. It's highly similar to ours. I'm not. Prepared to speak much more than the fact that I put that in there. One of the uh, interesting things about what we have on the books now. We tend to approve them if people meet the minimums, but we're not obligated to. So. It's a tool in there that you don't have to use. Um, but yeah, it just it tends to be something Caswell City, if people are meeting those minimums. I uh, I know um.
We uh, the council meeting, last council meeting, talked a little bit about. Uh, some of the. Things there and about. One of the suggestions that was made by uh, somebody on the council. That they've got a joint here. Certainly, there's never quite enough data, but there's other issues as well. This may be one. Yeah. Everybody go get your own takeout. Okay, any other comments on this before we move on? Okay, let's move on. Uh, next time is called the public.
And yeah, we have no public.
You're online.
Other than other than we've allowed uh, Commissioner Hunt, that's the uh, alternate to be online.
Yeah, that's fine.
So. If there are any comments from. From her, I think that would be it.
Okay. No one here, no, no comment, mustn't comment. So other matters.
Uh, yeah. So a few things that the chair brought up one of them. Um, I'll reach out by email here soon. I'm working with Councilmember Tran to coordinate. Going to get together, meet up with the planning commission in city council. Been a while since we've done one. It's good. So hopefully we get to know each other a little more and kind of bridge some of these dynamics of issues we're working on. And I think part of where it came up is uh, um. I don't know if it's necessarily a bad thing, but I think there's interested in chatting. There's been a handful of. Recommendations that have been. Uh, negative or well, what's a positive from the commission that have been rejected by the council or vice versa. And just trying to get on the same wavelength of uh. One is, you know, it's okay, probably to have different opinions and that process take place, but is there? Or clarity in the direction of where the city is going and understanding the plan? Uh, but also to talk a little bit about the process on those if if it's. What type of noticing takes place based on? You know, the gap between council and planning commission. If it is a negative recommendation. It sounds like at least certain uh, members on the council think there's probably an expectation from the public that maybe it's not moving forward. And so. Some procedure. And so is the Harvey property that was saw grassed though?
They approved it.
Just the one phase.
Yeah. Only the first phase. They did not uh, require the connection of 75 south. For wanting this drive. For a variety of reasons, which were good reasons. It has good reasons for that. Um, but they did uh. Stipulate or indicate that the. Applicant had already just agreed to reduce the number of. Units that they were showing in future phases. And they had put together a configuration for how to do that with the help of the council. But planning commission hadn't seen that and the council. Uh, indicated they would be more comfortable in having that back to the planning commission and work through that. Or if it comes to the council, yeah, and indicated they were a no priority opposite of the phases. And so it may be a while for they.
I I think General Chair can confirm this or not. They're. Generally supportive of. The overall concept, the type of density, the amount of housing and. And they didn't end up voting on all of it. So it wasn't completely clear. Um, but I was surprised on the. Uh, how the well was received is overall, even though they didn't, they didn't approve all the other phases. So.
I think it's kind of shaping up to be. Um, a bit of a Waterloo kind of an issue. It's the sewer district. And their stipulation that they they plan just for key units per acre. If we approve anything more than than two units an acre, we're gonna max out their capacity. Uh, ahead of time. So. Then. You know, some of the council members were indicating and saying, hey. That's it then. We shouldn't be approving anything more than that. And others were saying, well, you know, it's something we have to look at. If we want to be more than that as a city, we should have the ability to do that. So uh, that's something I think we're gonna talk through much more in detail.
So just moab over through this and they went back and forth and eventually they put a building inventory on it. I was in the governor's office when that happened. And slowed down their commercial belt and eventually they were forced to upgrade their sewer. Because they they had four hotels committed, they couldn't build.
Yeah.
And so, but now we can't question because of the. Eventually the sewer district had to give. It it it, and our density left. That's the ideal base.
Well, something we definitely, it's gonna be.
Yeah, and it's it's been a, I. You know, we we enjoy working with the sewer district. They have fantastic staff and they've been a good part of our community for a long time. We're lucky, I think, to have them in Kaysville and. And you know, they've. Built a system around what for many years we've anticipated is how the city would grow and. And uh, chicken and egg, what comes first? Do they upgrade the system or do we tell them what we think we're doing differently? And. It's it's causing some. It's not gonna be easy to to do that. And it's not gonna be cheap probably to accommodate that. So these, these are interesting times to uh. Come from that and decide how that's gonna shake out. Interesting to watch. Uh, general plan update. So we've concluded the initial steps, um, appreciate the outreach and that we got on it. Um, the numbers, uh, we had something like 5,000 people that looked at and visited the website. Uh, to learn about it a little bit. Um. And that's about 5,000 hits, about 1,000, about 1,200 of those were unique users. Uh, some people went back multiple times to look at things. And we weren't, aren't able to identify at this point, I think Commissioner Barris asked the question to geolocate either by IP address or where they're at in town. So we're gonna try to do that through future efforts. See if we can better identify where the comments are coming in from. Um, but we think based on the map, they're pretty well spread out throughout town. So. We we think we covered hopefully a lot of others. And once they disseminate that data, there's we're doing that now. Uh, I think by the end of next week, they're gonna have some of that data together to report. And then the week after, I believe the. Technical advisor committee or whatever is meeting to look forward to next step. So. Uh, we had about 200 people uh, complete. The questionnaire, about 150 people that did the visual preference survey. And I think there were something like 500 unique comments on the map. And probably more interaction than that. So those are the comments themselves and people like dislike a comment as you. So that'd be fun to see how that worked out.
Yeah. Go take a look at that map and just look over those comments. I'd encourage you, you saw it.
I think the money don't comment. They said they like movies in the park. They didn't like the dead box stores and they live here for 47 years. And slow growth and.
We're we're gonna be dealing with that for another several months. Uh, we're. Three, four months into a 13 monthish process. So there will be other opportunities and. Hopefully we can do more in person. Our consultant was very confident. I. We're 33,000 people roughly and to see 200 people fill out the surveys. Would have loved to have more, but at least it was out there. We we made multiple efforts and appreciate the help in that. But their comments were, you know, if it hadn't been for the pandemic, we would have done these exercises in an open house. We may have had 50 or 75 people. And so they thought it was, it's been a unique twist for them to kind of be forced to do this early on. Uh. They always do an online component in recent years, but usually not at this stage. And they thought it was actually pretty positive on that amount of feedback basically. Often would get. Through a more traditional process. So. But we'll look to do the in person and others as we go on. So we can involve everyone in the community and keep you posted on that. I think my last calendar item report for me, I'll be happy to get some from you is just calendar. And we've previously decided we're not meeting around the 24th of July. So the 23rd, our meeting is canceled. So this is your one and only meeting this month. We will be back on August the 13th. Knock on wood, we will be at city hall. Um. I think others think I'm optimistic about that. Um, but the timing is our contractors should be out by the end of the month. Furniture install is that first week of August. We doing furniture and IT. Uh, I think by the 13th within two weeks, we likely would be meeting there. So keep your eyes peeled on that. Um, in either event, I suspect we're in person meeting. We could continue to.
Yeah. The governor hasn't made a change on the proclamation. I I might today with when. He said there was gonna be some. Additional guidance, but nothing changed on that.
I've gotten the impression that they want to keep in the middle forward. In the case of the town, it may not increase.
Not yet.
The hospital location may seem the same.
Yeah, it's interesting, different base level increase. Okay, um. On the general plan, I just, oh, Kyle, there there's an advisory uh, meeting on the 22nd. And I think uh, from that, we'll see what our next steps are and outline that a little bit better. So. We'll add some more information on that. Um, I just found out a little bit interesting. I uh, participated in an urban land institute. Web, not a webinar, but a panel discussion that was all on Zoom today. It was talking about COVID-19 and uh, housing affordability issue. And as you know, that's been going on for some time, the housing affordability issue, but how was COVID-19 affected it and what's happening with? Housing market and uh, this is a couple of uh, interesting thing takeaways that I got from that. Was that um, for the month of, the last week of March, first part of April. The uh. On the Realtors Association indicated that the number of showings. That were given for uh, properties was at a record all time ever low. And that's understandable, you know, with COVID out there and the social distancing and quarantine and people didn't want. The you go to somebody's house to look through or people that were in the house didn't want people coming in through their alley. But that was subsequently followed and made by a very low number of closings. Or new sales for sales. So. That was uh, one indicator that things may be really slowed down. But then for the month of June. They have pretty close to an all time record high number of closes. Which is really interesting. It's kind of like the the demand has got pent up and then all released in the month of June. Their uh, their showings are way back up again. The demand appears to be up there again. But in the MLS for the month of July, at this point in July, they have about 6,400 properties listed. And normally in the month of July, they have nine to 10,000. So uh, that's an indicator that there's more demand out there right now than there is supply. Chris Ambruless of Ivory uh, indicated as well that for, it's been pretty steady over the, over a number of years. That for the sale of their new homes. About 30% of those are brought to them by Realtor. Otherwise, it's people just going directly to Ivory, you know, contracting with them to build a house and so on. That's pretty normal. Every so often you get a Realtor that comes through, somebody is somebody's looking for a house and they can't find a house. That they want and the Realtor says, well, let's go talk to somebody about building you. He says, right now it is a 50 to 60%. Which again tells you that people aren't cleaning houses. That they want to buy or that they'd like to buy. And so they're they're being driven to the. Home building market and Chris says they're having a hard time keeping up with demand. And uh, and not only that, but the houses that they are building and partly because of the man, the costs are increasing. Um, materials, labor, um, all of the other things that go along with that. And then he also did indicate, you know, he says. We're they're seeing an increasing trend, whereas they go to the local governments for entitlement. For new uh, subdivisions and new development properties. That even where they may be entitled to more units. That the officials are saying to them, look, be a good guy and build fewer units because the neighbors. We don't want you to build quite that many units and they acquiesce. He says, that's fine. But again, what it's doing is it's. Lowering the number of available units and driving up the demand and cost. So he's saying that the the housing affordability issue is not getting better, anything is getting worse. So that's an, that's just an interesting update I thought from the takeaways I took from that. Yeah, he was. Uh, okay, what else? The the lead conference is scheduled to come up. Uh, where they're going to have a pretty big planners day involvement. That that is in September. Right around, well, mid September. But they're not sure at this point whether it's going to be virtual. Or live, they're thinking that maybe it was going to be. Part live and part virtual, but given what's happened with the current, with the uh. Current outbreak, so to speak, things are kind of up in the air and as they are for many. Organizations and conferences as to what's gonna happen in the future conferences and so on. So. I don't know, we shall see.
We'll keep an eye on that. Thanks for bringing that up and. Either this meeting or probably by email, we'll pass that along as soon as we know. We certainly encourage anyone interested to participate. At least plan our state from this point.
Okay, anything else commissioners? Anything anybody else have?
When are we gonna get the official Caswell City Planning Commission mask? I'll get to work.
That'd be great. All right, commissioners, I guess we will see you all again for our next meeting on August 13th. Have a happy holiday in between. Uh, you know, kind of like our last holiday, go parades, go fireworks. Of man. So I live, uh, you know, I live up on uh, just about a block or two below Highway 89. And for my uh, upper floor, upper bedroom window upstairs, I have a pretty good view out over um. The northern, north uh, and central part of Kaysville and over into Lathan. The northern, north uh and central part of Kaysville and over into Layton. First of all, we kind of were out walking around that evening with our family and it sounded like a war going on. It sounded like there was distant artillery everywhere. And then that evening, as we got back and I went upstairs and I looked out that window, I mean, there were fires works off over the place. Normally you have, you can see, you know, the big displays in Layton and Magoon and New Kaysville and so on. But at this time, there wasn't that, but there were. I'll tell you what, people spent some serious money on fireworks this year to do it themselves. And it was pretty amazing.
On our our street, we had three neighbors that got together and they shot fireworks. And then we have another neighbor who's down and they downed the other two and that, they did fireworks all over the house. And it wasn't the smallest.
Yeah.
It wasn't bigger. They drove up the line. Pretty amazing.
I know some of our fireworks stands sold out here in Kaysville. And now you watch some of the news reports and some businesses were brought out of bankruptcy thanks to the good sales that we did.
Yeah, yeah. What I heard was that uh, on the market report is that the company selling the fireworks to individuals and people for doing gang busting businesses. And the big companies that do the fireworks displays, they were all on the bankruptcy. All right. With that, we're done talking. Anybody have anything else? I'm open to a motion to adjourn. Don't move. Don't move. And non-debatable, all favors say aye, aye and aye. We are adjourned until our meeting on August thirteenth. Thanks all. See you next time.